Did anyone have any questions?
Make the motion, we accept the senator. I'll second him.
We have a second by Jorgensen and or a motion by Jorgensen and a second by Kay to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. First up, we have Brenda Mainwaring, president and CEO of Iowa West Foundation. She's going to provide an update and discussion on the grant award cycle one.
Yes, I am. Hopefully you saw the paper today. I have some press releases, which I think you should have gotten as well, so. And then at the end, Susan Chairman Chairwoman Miller had asked me some questions about casino income. And so I'm happy to address that if you have any questions about that. So this is my try or every three months or so, I come in and tell you the about our cycle grant awards and sort of give you some highlights about how we're influencing well-being and quality of life in the county. And we really focused on one thing this time, and that's the status of our preschool or kindergarten readiness of kids. That the press release talks a lot about the fact that there was the thriving Thriving Family Alliance recently made an announcement that Potawatomi County is number one in the state for kindergarten readiness. And considering the demographic challenges that we face in our our Potawatomi County, the fact that we are number one in the state is something to really celebrate. For 18 years, Iowa West Foundation has given roughly a million dollars a year for all school districts in Potawatomi County to have access to hold full day four-year-old preschool. And most of the school districts have taken that opportunity. It is certainly not that alone that allowed Potawatomi County to get to number one. But that commitment to four-year-old preschool, to making sure that all the kids in Potawatomi County have access to a level start when they start kindergarten makes a lot of difference. It means that when they get to third grade, they're reading, they're more likely to be reading at a third grade level. It means when they get to high school, they're more likely to graduate. And so this is a real achievement for our county. We're very happy that we've been part of it. And again, this cycle, we've awarded another 1.3 million dollars to Green Hills AEA. They've managed the program for us for all of those 18 years. And they've done a terrific job of working with the school districts to make sure that that program is well administered. Some other things that you might be interested in, Avenue Scholars of Southwest Iowa. I've told you before that Avenue Scholars is one of the ways that we are making sure we're reaching career training into the rural school districts. And they are doing such a great job with such great reviews from the school districts that we've funded them to add another person so they can expand their reach and get even more students into that program. Hancock received $10,000 for the volunteer fire department gear program. Macedonia, $10,000 for Heart and Soul Community Coordinator. That's wrapping up that program for Macedonia for their heart and soul. You'll also see in here, Lawrence and Gardens, Omaha Children's Museum. We've given grants to those organizations for a very long time. But we have very recently, in the last couple of years, made grants dependent on them reaching out into Southwest Iowa. Not just, hey, we offer programs and Southwest Iowa can come over. But they are actively reaching out to making sure those programs are available and are targeted at school kids in Southwest Iowa. You'll also see our usual contribution to Potawatomi Arts, Culture and Entertainment, or PACE. We've made a slight change in that in that we are focusing our contribution on building operations. So they can focus their fundraising on program. We want to make sure that that building is protected and secure. And then they can do the additional fundraising for whatever programs they want to do. And then the last one on on this list I'll point out is Southwest Iowa Leadership Academy. I know that's a program that the supervisors have supported and we continue to support that. It's a great way. Everything I hear about it is that the students who come go through that program have a wonderful experience and really become more tightly connected to this community. And that's the single thing that we want to make sure that our residents feel. So any questions about any of that?
No, no, only question or point I want to make is you said Family Alliance. Just the past is used to be promised partners for those that are not sure that is.
Yes.
You know, and then the other question I had is this time it seemed like there was quite a bit of funds used for operating funds for different organizations. Is that is that still a three-time thing or how does that work?
Well, we do. So you mean, do we give awards three times a year?
Well, no.
It is a three-year.
For operating, yeah.
We do not have multi-year anymore unless they specifically have a program that depends on them having a multi-year commitment. And we have a pretty high standard of of reaching that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. You you mentioned something along the lines of a program for for high school kids to get into a career. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, are you talking about high school kids that graduate Potawatomi County to stay in the county, to stay in their communities?
I sure hope so.
Well, that's what I'm asking. I I had a chance to hear from traders supervisor schools and trainer. And they had they have a program now that they're incorporating in the in a high school, which kind of partners with businesses and get kids to maybe visit their their business, see what, you know, job opportunities are out of high school. Because college is not for everybody. Would you agree with that?
That's what we're funding. Trainer is a perfect example. Trainer, we had a program called Potawatomi Promise and a lot of kids graduated. They they we were able to give scholarships to a lot of kids, but not all kids.
Right.
And we decided we wanted to have a broader reach. We went to all of the school districts and said, what do you need for your kids to develop a workshop or a workforce development program? And that's one of the reasons why you see trainer standing that up now.
Yes.
Because we specifically went out to each of the rural districts to target something for what they need. And that's one of the the Avenue Scholars is one of the things they're doing. Iowa Western Community College Counselors is one of the things they're doing. But we also, for example, have had helped some of the school districts, the rural school school districts, train their own teachers and how to help with those counseling exercises. Yeah, and and some of them are developing specific programs for apprenticeships, internships. But you are absolutely right. Not everybody needs college.
One of the things when I went to high school, I went to Little Town of Autumn Iowa, graduated. Back in those days, we had industrial arts program. I don't know if they have industrial arts programs in schools. I'd like to see that come back, if that's a possibility.
I think it looks different. It looks like a welding certificate. It looks like a carpenter certificate.
Yes.
And the other thing we find is that if kids can get that certificate in high school, a couple of things. It gives them the confidence that they can go out and get a job and maybe they'll go on to school later.
Right.
They don't get any debt.
Yes.
And that's really important.
Yeah.
And they're surrounded by counselors and the kind of support that they need to finish that certificate instead of trying to be an adult for the first time and go to school and get a certificate, which I think we all remember was challenging.
I like that approach. Thank you. Yeah, you've put that much in every year for?
A little over a million dollars for 18 years.
That it's always confusing what Des Moines is doing with that, but I really appreciate you.
Oh, no, 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 that does not go to Des Moines. That is a strict pass.
I understand that. I just what they're doing politically up there.
Yeah, it is.
I I try to read it and follow it. One day it's there, one day it's going to go away and stuff, but I really appreciate you putting that towards that.
The bill is not complete, as everybody understands. As it's as I understand, as it stands right now, AEA will continue to be able to serve as a fiscal agent, which will allow them to continue running this program. The bill is not finished yet.
Okay, good.
No, I questions.
Yeah, I really like the effort Neighbor Works puts in to try to build homes for low and moderate income people. I noticed that you give there was like a $260,000 grant to Hillside Phase Two.
The states, yep.
Where where is that?
Bennett Avenue.
Right there by the.
Oh. Okay, what town? Is that for infrastructure or for?
No, they're well underway with. In fact, there's a ribbon cutting next week. Or several of the houses are complete. So it's a really interesting project because it's a partnership between private and and nonprofit. So Turn the Page, which is private, is building a half to two-thirds of the homes there. And then is working very closely with Neighbor Works and the city of Council Bluffs to build the rest of the homes there that will be protected at a certain level of expense because of the the city dollars that have been put into it. So it's a it's not mixed use, but it's sort of mixed income with a private and a nonprofit entity.
So that is going to go for the actual building of those homes?
It is. It's for what they need to use it for. But yes, if they are building the homes with the funds we're getting.
Awesome.
All those structures in and there it is a kind of a mixed use because there's some townhomes and single.
Yeah, that is true. With regard to.
There's a ribbon cutting.
When is it?
Yeah.
I don't remember. It's coming up.
Will you send some to us?
It's Courtney's Harder's event. It's the city's event.
I'll call it.
Fiscal update. So the I sent to Jeanette the latest legislative analysis. They do this on a regular basis, tells you what's what the income is, what, you know, it's four pages of a lot of talk. But ultimately, the number of people walking in the door is continuing to decline in the in casinos across the state. That is certainly true in Council Bluffs. The amount that they're spending is kind of trickling up, so it's fairly stable on the income. Obviously, here in Council Bluffs, with the impact of Nebraska, they're starting to see a downward trend. The the our casino partners expect to see that downward trend continue. The state did an estimate about two years ago, and they said the loss to Council Bluffs could be as much as 30 to 35%. The casinos have never believed it's going to be that high, but they certainly believe there will be a loss. But they also have a lot of confidence that what they're offering here will be better than what's being offered in Nebraska. There's a lot of reasons for that. There are very valid reasons that people will want to keep coming over to this side of the river to play. And so they have a lot of confidence and they're investing. They're putting a lot of capital investment back into their facilities, as you can see if you've been down there, so that they can make sure they are a permanent and productive presence for Council Bluffs.
A bunch of this decrease is due to the economy. You look at inflation, you look at people deciding, you know, I don't have the bucks to spend at the casinos that I used to have. I mean, you see any of that as as a factor? Or the casinos across the river as more of a factor?
I think it's the casinos across the river. I think that kind of regardless of the economy, there's a certain stability to casino income over the course of the last few decades. And so where you start to see a decline, it's probably more likely because there are other places to go.
Iowa has one positive. I had I received a call from somebody over in Omaha asking, you know, because they're they're supporting their casinos over there. They're not allowed to smoke in those casinos. Smoking is allowed here in Iowa. They were asking me, can I, why does Potawatomi County allow casinos in in Potawatomi County to allow smoke? I said, we have nothing to do with it. But I see it, I hate to say it, but I see that as a positive for this side of the river.
Yeah.
Am I right?
That that is true. And our casinos here in Council Bluffs are tied to national level casinos. And so when somebody comes here to play and they get award points, they can go use those award points in Vegas, in Atlantic City, in fancy places. And so that's a real attraction and a unique aspect, too.
Thanks for the update this morning. It must be very thrilling to the staff at Iowa West and the board members to know that after 18 years, you are moving the needle on the early childhood education.
It's a long time to wait, but 18 years is worth it. You think about the kids, you know, those kids who started are now in their first career and it made a difference.
Is there anything the county can help Iowa West with at this time?
Should have prepared me for that question. Sorry, I was going to come up with that.
I do have one more question. You know, we're we're trying to, I guess, establish the metro area, Omaha Council Bluffs metro area. What 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 things are you working on that would help us do that? Is it are you? Is there anything out there?
Oh, absolutely. I am actually on the Omaha Chamber Urban Corps Committee. And they never make it through a meeting without me talking about Council Bluffs. Just ask them, they'll tell you the same thing. Really focusing on the fact that we have to grow economically as a region and we will work together. So there's that participation. We also just funded, and it's on this list, the we're with MAPPA. We're funding the study that the city needs to do in order to decide determine whether that multimodal bridge is viable and where it would go and what it would cost and who's going to pay for it. So that's the the most important first step to getting that that first thing done. And then we're creating, helping you create remarkable attractions like Crescent Ski Hills that is tangibly contributing to the metro area economic income.
Thank you. Put the rail car out there.
I'm sorry?
I said, we'll put the rail car out there, too.
Thank you again, Brenda.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brenda.
Next up, Lucy Hoppe, Prevention Coordinator, Iowa State Extension and Outreach. You have an update on the Speak Up Be Safe program.
Yes.
Good morning.
Morning, world speaker.
You're welcome. And the packet there is our shareholders report, but just kind of briefly talked about everything that we have done last year. And that's what I'll be reporting on this year. So are we up Mitch?
You can take the lap, download it.
Well, since he's doing that, I'll talk about this paper on the left side of your folder. It's about a event we're going to be having, and it's called Grid Shock. And I'm a member of the Potawatomi County Child Abuse through the Fight, Striving Family Alliance. And we're going to be showing this April 25th down at Lake In Campus. And Grid Shock is a story of sex trafficking in Iowa. And that's what it totally focuses on is that what's going on in Iowa? Why are we such a hotspot for sex trafficking? And then after that is done, this Dave reeks. And I think you kind of had, I got a contact from Brian Shay for him. He'll be speaking about what it's like to work in that area. He's a former FBI agent and it's going to be a really good night. You get a light supper and it'll be a lot of things there that'll really bring to light what's going on. We're doing it April 25th because of Berkshire Hathaway Weekend and the College World Series. And those are the two most trafficked times in our area. Is that Berkshire Hathaway and the one at the College World Series. There's more people traffic during that time in this area than any other time of the year. And it's just because there's so many people in and out and all the exposure to it. So certainly it's going to be very interesting. And if you have a chance to be there, we'd love to have you. You can contact at the bottom of that. There's a contact number to let them know you're coming. So we make sure we have enough food and enough space for everybody. Right now, we're looking at that the Salvation Army's Chapel. I think it holds about 150, and we're hoping to fill that up. So that's what that's going to be about. And then I'll talk a little bit about this last year, Speak Up Be Safe. These are the schools that have participated. I did add in there Carter Lake. I just got them this year after a lot of trial and tribulation, a lot of you got to try us, you got to try us. They are going to have us there March, May 14th and 15th. It's going to be a challenge because they've asked us to cut the program down to two days, but just 40 minutes a day. And we're pulling some things out. Angie Shoney and I, I'll be doing that one. And it's going to work. It's just not going to be what we do normally. We had they're taking some activities out. They don't feel they need at this point. But just to get our foot in the door, I think it's going to be a really good step toward getting in there full time and getting those hours that we need to do the full program. So our classrooms visited last year were 249. Our total staffs there is 5,003 kids. I don't think we're going to hit that this year. I kind of did a rough estimate yesterday, and I'm looking about, we're looking about 47 to 4,800. I'm not sure why that is. I know Hoover chose not to use us, and that might be why we're not going to get that right to that 5,000. But I'm working hard to try to get there. We have 32 disclosures, four were accepted by DHS, which actually is really good for us. We don't want to bombard DHS or the county attorney with a bunch of that we know probably will not be ones that they would try to get a conviction on. So we did have four accepted. And of course, we don't always know unless it's in the paper whether those were actually convicted or not. And we, so I have no idea. And I'm not allowed to call even an ask as a as the supervisor, you just can't do that. So my facilitators, I'm really pleased they're here with me today. And the the rust or not the rust, but the mustard colored letter is Teresa McBride. And this is Teresa's second year with me and with us. And I love her because she is a substitute teacher and she's also a CASA worker. So she gets it. I mean, she gets what these kids need and and what they what they what they're they're. She can kind of weed things out sometimes. Lisa Dunning is also a CASA worker, and Lisa's on leave right now, battling some health issues. So she has not been able to work much since November. Angela Linen Shoning is new to us this year, but she is a gem. She's a registered nurse, and she also does substitute teaching. So I've got the best of all worlds right now. They they know what to do. I don't have to guide them. They we follow through, we talk a lot, we're a great team. And finally, with me today is my regional director, and that is Carrie Astro. And she is so supportive of me and the program. And I'm kind of on an island by myself and within Iowa State. I'm the only one doing this type of program. So if I have an issue, I have to figure out who do I call? And 99.9% of the time, it's her. And she walks me through or says, maybe we should try this or this. So these people and Lisa are just invaluable to this program. They really add a spark to it and have really gotten us where we're at right now. So here's some comments that the teachers gave over the last year. I did put in one that it says three days would be better. And they really want this three-day program. Financially, we can't afford to do that. Also, this program is brought to us through Child Helps, and it's based in Arizona. It's just a two-day program. And it was given to us by a gentleman by the name of David Brown out of Iowa State that said, why don't you try this? And it's been very successful for us. But a lot of the teachers still want those those that third day in there, and I understand it. They want to have more role playing and things like that, but financially, we just can't do that. And this program is very effective, so. And then this is what I, a lot of people think that we should not be the ones in the classroom. This year, I had a teacher call me an oxymoron in an evaluation because she said, why would you have a stranger come in to teach people about strangers? Yet there's statistics that prove kids are more likely to talk to a professional person that isn't connected to them in any way. Why? Because we don't know about their life. We don't judge them. We listen, we write it down, we make a decision to call it in. And that's why our our program is so important for us to continue to have. And if she if they feel that we're oxymorons, so be it. The rest of that school loves us and they're having us back. They're already scheduled. So I can take that, that that because I I've looked at the I've looked at the statistics. I know what it is. I've done this for 26 years. I know that us going into their schools as that person they don't know very well, and we can build that trust with them, they will tell us stuff. And both of my girls can tell you stories about kids that you're like, oh, my gosh. How can that be? And it is, it's out there. Our biggest type of child abuse that happens in this county is neglect. The sexual abuse is very small, the physical's there, but the neglect is the biggest one, just not getting those basic things they need to be safe and healthy. And I've been emphasizing to the kids this year that it doesn't mean your parents bad. It means your parents might need some help to help them help you. And I think that's what a lot of it is. They just don't have that resource to say, hey, this is what I can do. We can do for you if you'll just let us do it for you. So that's why I put that in there, that it is really proven that it is good for us to ask them directly about it rather than some that they don't know.
Lucy, remind me, what age group do you speak with?
PK through fifth. And PK kindergarten first and second. And third is more about like, you need someone besides your parents you can go to for help. You've got to find those, that person or persons that can say, you can trust me. I will find you the help you need if I can't help you myself. Fourth and fifth grade is a lot of internet safety, and we talk about start talking about healthy relationships. Especially in fifth grade, you're moving into that junior high, a lot of changes are going on in that body. And we just kind of give them those guidelines of what a healthy relationship might be. And of course, a lot of the internet safety, which there's so much out there right now that is so very dangerous for all these kids. So we do that in the fifth grade. There is a sixth through 12th program. I am not qualified to do that. If we were ever to go to that, it would have to be somebody else brought in to do the the older kids. I spent an afternoon with Carrie at Woodrow Wilson the other day with junior high, and I went, I couldn't do this every day. And you know what? They were really, they were nice. They were not rude. I was wore out. They just, I'm like, I couldn't do this. So obviously, it'd be someone else. But right now, there's zero funds for that. We're focusing on pre-K through fifth, and it seems to be working pretty good for us.
Any reports from these third graders about a younger sibling that might be experiencing the same abuse that they have? I mean, just what the point is to try to reach them before they're five years old.
A lot of them that will disclose will let you know that other ones in the house are getting abused as well. Very seldom will they say they are, but I'm not. It's always, I am, and this is what's going on with them as well. So you might find the whole group as a whole. So here's a kid that was eaten out of a garbage can. And they finally got DHS in there, and it was horrific. It was going on with all these children. It was awful. And they got them out of there, and they are now all adopted and doing really, really well. So we're really happy about that. So can you get my thank you up there, Mitch, real quick? You took it away. I wanted to come up because I want to thank Matt Wyant, who's been so wonderful to me and so supportive of us, giving us $15,000 every year to help with the program. Eric in the county attorney's office, he and I worked in August and September to redesign the questions that we ask to make sure we're not we're not investigators. We don't want to appear to be an investigator. There's a series of questions we are allowed to ask. That's it. That helps build that foundation for those people to be able to get more information if we need or try to get a conviction of someone. And he's just been so wonderful about guiding me and saying, this is why we're not going to do this, and this is why we're going to do this. And I think the set of questions we have right now is really good, and it does kind of set that foundation foundation up for them. And of course, thank you to all of you for asking me to come in, for supporting us. Several years ago, I don't know if any of you were on the board then, you might have been on, Tim, when we got $30,000 from the the money that's that's got from like the the drug seizures and things like that. And Matt Wilber was able to give us $30,000 out of that. So I don't know if that's available anymore, but we'd certainly take anything you have. If you want to give us, we're not proud about that. But thank you so much. I do appreciate the support. We are needed in in this district, actually throughout the county, which we do cover every school in the county. And without you, it wouldn't be possible. So thank you.
Yes, you said strangers talking to stranger, kids talking to strangers about strangers. And yet schools have guidance counselors that normally that they would talk to us at that point. But if you're in a school, usually, you're right about that because I'm I'm from a small school, so I know. Guidance counselors usually know your folks and, you know, whatever. So kids aren't willing to open up to guidance counselors who know their folks. Am I right?
Absolutely. I had one in a small rural town, and and he gave me the information, and I wrote it down. And and that because it was a smaller town, they called in the police. We felt it like is maybe an imminent danger thing. And they brought in the police officer or the sheriff. And they had by the afternoon, they had people in that were going to talk to him some more. And the teacher said to me, but their last name is this. You can't turn that in. And I said, I'm a mandatory reporter in this state, and I am turning it in because I have to turn it in. That's my job. That's the law. And I'm not so sure if they knew about it or not, but they were afraid because of this name that they would have repercussions of it. So you're you are exactly right, Jeff. That's exactly what happens is that counselors know the parents, know the grandparents, know, you know, generations. And a lot of them say, well, that kid's a liar. You know, I don't say that. I don't know. I write in information, I turn it in, and let them take it over. So you are exactly right. It is very true. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Lucy.
You bet.
Thank you all for all you do.
Thank you.
Thanks, ladies. Important thing to do.
All right, Mark Huemaker, Director Conservation, has an update on tourism awards.
Yeah, thank you. So I brought Mark Ackman along. He has some news about some Council Bluffs awards. But I wanted to make sure that we got this award. We were nominated for a rural attraction award. And that was across the state of Iowa. We went to the Iowa Tour. Um and that was across the state of Iowa. We went to the Iowa Tourism Conference last week to accept the award and it was for Mount Crescent Ski Area. Um this is actually for the Board of Supervisors and I'm so glad that Brenda was on the agenda today, too. Um we couldn't have done this without the supervisor's support and without Iowa West Foundation's support. Um we're getting a couple more copies, so one will definitely come to the Iowa West Foundation and we'll have one for staff. Yeah, and staff did an awesome job the last couple of years with with Mount Crescent Ski Area. Um it's it's just amazing the the reaction that the communities had to that that attraction, so it was it was pretty cool, so. Um I don't know how many people were at the tourism conference. I counted like sixty tables of six, so at least four hundred people around there. So it was pretty impressive, the amount of awards that they handed out. Um there's a lot of good things happening across the state for tourism. And I know Council Bluffs is is doing a lot with the CBB as far as tourism. I'm the the chair on that on that board. So I'll turn this over to Mark if he has anything to interject about this award. Awesome, but he has some news, too, for um for uh Council Bluffs.
Very exciting.
Yeah, just to echo what Mark shared just a moment ago. This award, if nothing else, affirms the decision that was made by the board and with the help of the Iowa West Foundation's wisdom. And uh I guess the vision of seeing the opportunity of acquiring Mount Crescent, putting it in the very capable hands of Potawatomi Conservation. Uh I've been here nine years, which uh doesn't make me a, you know, lifelong resident or anything, but one of my favorite places is a Potawatomi County conservation property and that's Hitchcock. And I could see great things happening at Mount Crescent uh that'll complement that uh that will allow conservation to do even more. In my thirty-seven years of being in travel and tourism, I've always worked with county conservation. It's almost like the two are interwoven, but tourism and conservation. Uh starting in Mamuan County in southeastern Iowa and then later on working with the Waplo County uh Conservation Board staff and then here. And I have to say the staff, the best staff that I've worked with is certainly Potawatomi County, so uh. Uh I have a lot of respect for what Mark has accomplished in thirty-one years leading uh conservation. It's something that we should all be proud of, but also at the same time recognize how far we are behind in terms of acreage and uh facilities that certainly Mount Crescent is going to help kind of expand that, but there could be even more in that regard. And so with this uh winter's weather, I think there's even a greater need to have this be a four-season attraction, not just a winter attraction for what it's going to be able to do. I think the anecdotal information of Crescent businesses seeing a fifteen to twenty percent increase last year is uh certainly significant. And even in Council Bluffs, we saw nearly nine percent increase uh in hotel analytics for the month month of March, which I know was a was a big explanation point uh last season in terms of wrapping up uh sledding and skiing and certainly snowboarding and all that good stuff. Uh without Mount Crescent's purchase, uh we wouldn't also be able to have the opportunity to win the Outstanding Niche Market Initiative. Uh that was for last winter's uh travel marketing campaign, which we had never done before. We had never done anything in the winter. But with having Mount Crescent be that singular destination or attraction for our destination, uh we were able to get out there instead of marketing nine months out of the year, we can market twelve months out of the year. And while the winter weather didn't work for us this year, I think it's going to probably come back with a vengeance next year. So there's going to be plenty of weather to uh ski and snowboard and sled and all that good stuff. Uh but we also had another award that came our way, which also has connections back to Potawatomi County. The Outstanding Marketing Collaboration for the twenty-twenty-three Omaha Metropolitan Area Tourism Awards, which we have been doing since twenty-seventeen, but it's just the last few years that we have made it into a marketing collaboration where we're working with Visit Omaha and Surby County Tourism and a greater part of Potawatomi County itself. Uh if you remember uh my report from last, I don't know if I said this in July report, maybe it was January, indicating that uh three out of the four uh winners of the awards came from the rural part of the county. So Dreamland Theater was best attraction, Bat Forty Bar and Grill was best restaurant. Uh best retail business was the Occasional Collective in Trainer. And then just to throw a bone to Council Bluffs, the Maristart one, best hotel. Uh so we spread it around, but uh last year's participation was just incredible and a lot of that came from quite a nomination from the rural part of this county as well as the voting. So uh we're looking right now like, well, right now we doubled the number of nominations that we received this year compared to last year. Uh I think we're talking about eighteen hundred nominations compared to nine hundred fifty-seven last year. And we're closing in on the last week of the voting, uh which was seven thousand nine hundred ninety-nine last year for almost at seven thousand with about six days left in the voting, okay, so. But because of that collaboration and support by uh the Potawatomi Tourism Committee, we were able to put this forth and have a remarkable year that we did culminating with the Outstanding Marketing Collaboration, uh which I think just underscores the quality of tourism activities that are taking place in Potawatomi County. It underscores also the value that travel and tourism brings. Uh more than three hundred twenty-nine million dollars was spent by people traveling at least fifty miles or farther in calendar year twenty-twenty-two according to tourism economics, and that's the most recent information available. Uh Potawatomi ranks fifth out of Iowa's ninety-end counties. You'd have to go to Polk, Led Johnson and Scott County, which coincidentally, three of those counties are I eighty as well and being at the intersection of I eighty and I twenty-nine helps tremendously, so. Uh I think we have a lot of great things going on. Mount Crescent, Potawatomi Conservation, all the good stuff. So I'd like to see us fold the course going forward and see if we can do some great things in twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five.
Congratulations.
I think this deserves a round of applause.
Very good.
Thanks, Mark. Thanks, Mark. What a wonderful job.
Brenda, I got a question for you just real quick. One question you don't have to answer. Do you know Talley Washburn?
Thanks, everybody. Brenda, thank you for your support.
Next on the agenda, we have Jason Slack, Director Buildings and Grounds, Discussion and/or Decision on Proceeding with the Asbestos Abatement Demolition of the Annex Building. Jason, before you get started, I think we might have the card before the divorce. Um I don't think the board has taken any action to determine that we want to demo the annex building. I mean, we've talked about it here and there, but we've never had any formal board action, nor have we publicly disclosed the fact that we're going out for bid to find people to bid on it. But yet in our packet today, we've got.
It's a discussion or decision. Um and and that's, you know, the the I'm not asking the board to make a decision on um anything today, really. We haven't, like you said, had a discussion on the future of the annex building and maybe that's what, you know, what we need to have first.
Yeah, I I think that's probably the agenda item we need to start with and we can put that on for next week's agenda. I mean, we've I think we're all in agreement. That's what needs to happen, but we we need to disclose it to the public what we're planning to do.
First, we got to get John and his crew out of there. I I hate to demo it with him in there. We kind of need him.
Yep.
And the whole crew.
I I would add that um in our discussions as we move forward with the renovation of the courthouse, the B Wing, um the addition of the secondary road building uh and uh the public health building. The annex building was always in the conversation. And regardless of what we do with that building, whether we renovate it or whether we tear it down, the asbestos has to come out. And one of the things about that building, when we had this discussion, it's unfortunate Jeff and Susan weren't here, but um that is no way handicap accessible for anything. Um it it really uh we have, we still have one department in there, that's secondary roads. If if a resident wanted to come in and speak with John, John has to come downstairs for that person if they if they can't manage the steps. So when you, when we talked about the expansion of the courthouse and all those things I mentioned, um part of that discussion was how we could either adapt that building for future use or the best thing to do was to remove it and add some parking. And at that time, the board was leaning toward, although we didn't give formal approval for for tearing it down, uh was to remove it because the cost to renovate it was far more than the uh facility is worth is worth. It has, uh Jason helped me for.
Okay. All right.
The the restroom doors are twenty-four inches wide. I mean, it's just that there the for that building to function as a handicap accessible building used for Potawatomi County, I don't see any. Uh you know, we've studied this, HGM's taken a look at it. It's given us the cost for renovation and the cost for removal. And uh well, I'm I'm not asking the board to make a decision on um the removal of that building. But uh regardless, whether we tear it down or we renovate it, even if we made it for storage, any kind of an upgrade on that's going to require us to remove the asbestos. So I I think that moving forward with the asbestos removal is a not only a legitimate step, but a much needed step, whether we take it down or we renovate it.
Jason, was were these bid, was the bid put out in the paper and?
No, they were not publicly advertised. I called all five asbestos removal companies in the area, sent the report out uh in these three bids or what we got back.
What triggered that?
I'm sorry?
What triggered you to do that?
To do the asbestos study? Uh well, we're in the building, working ourselves, doing maintenance on the building.
I understand that, but what triggered you to call them up?
It's a it's a liability risk, right? It's all about.
Sure.
It's when you're uncapsulated, it's when it becomes a liability.
I I I used to work in asbestos.
But we've been operating in that building until now.
You're open. You're open to yourself for.
I see. Yeah. Appreciate that. I just wondered what triggered that now.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You know, we still have people in there. Sherry just, it's just Sherry finally moved out.
She did.
Okay.
Are are that is that building, do you have air sampling going on in the in the building where asbestos is at? Do you have any of that going on?
We have done uh air quality sampling in the building in years past. Uh we haven't done one recently.
Is it is it is it past? I mean, there were no complications?
No, um but we do have uh issues with the roof leaking and and possible mold in the in the attic space due to improper ventilation.
Yeah, whatever whatever is being done or going to be done to that building, that asbestos needs to be out, so we eliminate that risk.
We have need for storage, more storage. Melvin's shaking his head yes.
Always does.
I mean, we we've talked about making it storage or cutting it in half and making more storage. And without a doubt, no matter what we do, we have to do a sprinkler system, correct?
No, I I mean, not necessarily. That would be a city. That would be the city's call. Uh we didn't have to do a sprinkler system in the Veterans Affairs Building when that was built.
Okay. I mean, if we did make it storage.
If we did make it storage, there would be a considerable amount of work that would need.
Because we could demo like a half or two-thirds of it. I don't, you know, just throwing it out there, we're in discussion, so then put some uh parking out there.
When you're talking storage, are you talking election equipment, Mel?
Well.
Are you talking?
Voted ballots and envelopes and what we have now in the election building is voted ballots and we'll get a lot more. Another twenty thousand ballots in November that we can't destroy for twenty-two months, so.
What about the basement? Is that is your spot down there big enough?
Some people out of the uh some of the other spaces, like we might be able to find more space. I'm going to talk to Jason and see if if we can find more space or some alternative because that election building is a nice facility. But just to use it as filing uh paper in there, it seems like there might be some better alternative. But we'll just have to look at that. And I thought the uh annex would might be suffice for an election building because it's more accessible for the voters at the counter.
On the main floor.
But yeah, but uh looks like maybe renovating it for that might not be uh.
How's this building down here for the election stuff? Is that what you were talking about, the election?
The actual state farm, yeah.
And that's in good shape?
I don't know. We'd have to look at that, too, and see if it'd be suitable.
Building's in good shape.
I'm kind of really asking Jason.
You know.
But yeah.
But for what we're storing, voted ballots, there might be some other alternative that might allow that space to be used for something suitable.
Susan, we'd be, you know, able to open this space next week, then? Is that just to see what kind of cost, possible costs are?
No, no, what I what I'm suggesting is we we table the action for today. And next week on the agenda, we talk about the pros and cons of demoing the building or repurposing the building.
But what I'm what I'm saying is we don't know. We don't know what demolition in our discussion. We wouldn't know what demolition costs. Uh Jason has some possible bids. I mean, would would we be able to see those bids at that time, just to give us an idea?
They're in your packet today.
Okay.
As best as one's.
Yeah, yes, that's this one. Jason, um did you do uh did you check these kids out as jam? Jamco is the lowest one. Would that be your recommendation to?
It would be, yeah, if the board decided to go that.
All right, I'll make a motion to uh um move with Jamco Abatement Services to remove the asbestos in the annex building for a sum of twenty-seven thousand three hundred ninety dollars.
I'll see. So what you brought are bids for the asbestos abatement, not bids to tear the building down. That's what I was asking. Okay.
Have you worked with Jamco before?
I have.
And you've checked their references and past history and?
Yep, we had good experience with them before.
Did they say when they could mobilize?
They have a mandatory ten-day waiting period. Uh that's determined by the state, um and then they can begin to mobilize on it. Uh but we we wouldn't want them to do that until we know for sure John's ready.
Oh, absolutely. We don't do anything until the building is completely empty.
Yeah, right.
It's good for how long?
Uh it leaves us in there three days.
John's not going to be on three days.
No, we have thirty days to accept their bid and then.
So.
Jason, have you contacted an asbestos abatement inspector? I mean, because these people have to be.
That's how that's how the report. So I called AMI Environmental and I had them come down um and do the inspection on the asbestos where they tested multiple materials for suspected uh, you know, ACMs. And I've got the full report. It's attached in your packet there. You can go through it. Um it identifies several uh items in the building as being asbestos-containing. Um and that's what that's what these contractors bid on. They look at the report, they came out, took a look at the building and they put together a bid for the county.
Doing separate bill for the asbestos abatement from the demolition of the actual building, then you bring it down underneath the hundred thousand dollar threshold, that would require going out for the the public bid process?
Everything's going to uh, well, the asbestos abatement obviously is under a hundred thousand dollar threshold. The demo is going to be under a hundred thousand dollar threshold.
Well, what I was saying is by the board doing it all in one action, it would exceed the hundred thousand.
I'm not sure how that would work. Obviously, uh it might be a question.
Shouldn't say nothing about the money. Where do you put the bid out? For both demolition and asbestos removal, they hire subs, just like they hire subs for. For both demolition and asbestos removal, they hire subs, just like they hire subs for plumbing and everything else.
But right now, we're, we're acting as the general contractor if we. If we decide to remove the asbestos and then once the asbestos removed. If we decide to move forward with the demolition of the building, that would be. I don't know if that would be a separate action from the asbestos removal or not, because.
I follow you.
Sit and wait for just a little bit. Discuss this and. Put it off.
I believe we're going to be under a hundred thousand dollars with both. If you have both together, though.
You just mentioned that the county would be the general contractor under this. That puts a lot of risk on you as far as inspecting their work.
Yeah, I wouldn't.
Well, the thing is, once the asbestos abatement is done, AMI Environmental comes back out and they inspect the work. So we actually have an inspector planning on coming back out, ensuring the asbestos has been removed. So, I mean, that, that part's already taken care of.
When did we approve AMI to do the inspection of the building then?
I've done, I did one in two thousand seventeen because we're in there doing maintenance in the building.
Oh, I understand that. When did we, the most recent one, when did we? Find that contract?
That was something that I did out of my budget. I didn't seek more approval for it.
I, I've been in the asbestos abatement. Projects before, and, and what needs to happen? You have a contractor come in, remove the asbestos, but you need an independent. Inspector to come in to verify that they're doing the work correctly.
And that would be.
Otherwise, you know, I mean, asbestos removal is a, is a costly project and you have to take that asbestos. To a certain, certain place to get, to get rid of it. You can't dump it in the county, the county landfill.
You're right, you're right.
All right, okay.
AMI Environmental is the company that we contracted, that I contracted with to go in there and do the inspection. And they will be onsite while.
Okay. They'll be onsite while it's being done.
While it's being done to monitor the air. And then after it's done, AMI Environmental is acting as a third.
They'll, they'll provide you a clearance. Clearance statement, okay, because the county can't be involved in inspecting or.
No.
No, I was. Life for liability progress, okay.
I just can't see the project being under a hundred thousand because we're going to either put back concrete or asphalt or something. Where that building's at.
Well.
And pulling out the footings, knowing what, we don't know what's there. I, I think you're. If you want to. Say you can do it for a hundred and. You're going to plan the rest of it in your budget or something. I don't see that happening.
I don't see the demo being over, over fifty thousand.
What, what, where is this asbestos at? Is it in pipe wrapping? Is it in the tile?
It's in the pipe insulation, it's in the ceiling pump mastic, and it's in the floor mastic.
Okay.
We, we've dealt with it. Every time we've changed the floor surface over there, we had to have asbestos. Removal come in and take, take the mastic off the floor.
Yep, yep.
And. It's, it, it's an ongoing, it has been an ongoing experience for us. Ever since that I've been.
It's, 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 it's a problem, that's for sure. It's a risk.
I think well, she went right over the existing flooring and he didn't even mess with it.
Over the carpet.
Yep.
Capted.
Yep.
Which he put hard floor over carpet and that didn't work at all. I mean, it created humps in it and. Trip has dirt in. I don't know, I didn't even pour it again once, so, yeah.
Never heard of that.
That's when we were overseeing over there. I think we're getting the cart before the horse here. I really do. We got to decide what we're going to do as a board. Before we move ahead with something that. If we disturb the. Asbestos, that's when we have issues. I say we sit and wait and we discuss it as a board and then we decide what we're going to do. I, I, all of a sudden, these bids are in and I don't get it, you know? We haven't, as a board, decided nothing yet. All of a sudden, we're sitting here trying to decide if we're going to. Move ahead with these projects and I don't think that's right. I think the board has to decide before we do anything.
We are deciding today to take the asbestos out of the building and with that, Chairman. Miller, I'll ask for a roll call move.
Oh, I'm still got another question. There's a price quote from JAMCO. That's my understanding is the one that was the motion.
That's correct.
Tim made. The scope of the work. I mean, we've got like three sentences here that tell us what the scope of the work is going to be. Is there an additional contract that goes into further detail as far as what the responsibilities are?
It's all in the report. It's on the AMI environmental report.
Is that in the packet?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion by Wickman, a second by Jorgensen to award the bill to JAMCO for the asbestos abatement. In the amount of twenty seven thousand, three hundred ninety dollars. For the annex building. Melvin, will you call the roll, please?
Sure. Cameron Miller?
Knowing how long it takes to get asbestos removal done, I will say aye.
Bell.
Aye.
Supervisor Bell. Wickman?
Aye.
Kay?
No.
And Jorgensen?
I, I'm just going to clarify myself real quick. I, I agree with Brian, except for the fact that I was in the business and I know. Asbestos is a very high risk. And I would say, yes, let's, let's get rid of it as quickly as we can, at the best possible means. We can do that.
Well, they're not going in till John's out.
Right, right. But like you said, it, you know, it's always, it's all, it's all works, it's all process. Yeah, they can't work in it when people are working. That, that certainly does.
So we're not taking any action on the demolition of the annex building today. Next up, Jason Slack, Director, Buildings and Grounds, Discussion and or Decision to Match the Old Portion of the Main Lobby Quarry Tile to the. Luxury vinyl tile flooring in the new addition.
Well, this bid is to go over the top of the existing quarry tile. It's going to be skim coated, so it is flat and level. And then we would go over the top of the existing quarry tile.
We don't have the bid in our packet, so I need more description.
Oh, I'm sorry. The bid was for thirty one thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. And it was from Council Bluffs Carpets.
Okay.
Who's that?
It's a carpet name company here in Council Bluffs.
What's their address?
They don't have an address on here. Oh, yeah, they do, sorry. Twenty nine oh six Avenue E.
So what's the lifespan of this luxury vent vinyl tile?
I would, I would just venture to guess twenty years.
I, I think that's stretching it by about ten years. What we've already installed down there has got permanent scratches in it. There's a constant battle to keep it clean. I know your staff does extraordinary extra effort. To keep it clean, but it always looks dirty. Maybe it's just the winter weather and what gets tracked in from outside. Maybe it'll improve this summer. But I'm not a fan. The dark color. I know it would probably look better if it was all the same thing, but couldn't we find something that kind of complements what's down there, but something that's going to be more durable and less maintenance?
Well, I was hoping we, when we did this addition, I was wanting Tarazo in there, but that was just. Cost prohibitive, you know, that's very expensive flooring. And this is what was settled upon.
The tile we have now.
The LVT.
I know. What's going on with the section there where the sheriffs were?
That's how HGM left it. I mean, they were just transitioning from the LVT to, you know, the existing quarry tile.
And then we took out the sheriff's deal and it's.
And they're supposed to be patching the holes. They're waiting on the quarry tile to come in so they can patch the holes that are in the floor.
So we can leave the quarry tile there if we so choose to not spend thirty one thousand?
Yes.
That, that's, that's the way I'd go. I mean, that quarry tile's working good. I'm not impressed by this stuff. I'm with Susan. I'm not impressed by the other stuff at all. That's my personal feeling and I, I just think the quarry tile's been there a long time and. We could buff it, we could do a number of things to that, rehab it. And it'd look good. Works good, stands up under the traffic and the weather. Had enough artwork sitting there, you could cover a lot of it up. That's it. Or a coffee shop.
Melvin, as the auditor, you have responsibility for the courthouse. What are your thoughts?
Well, my thoughts, I would. Under the direction of the board, and I'm receiving direction from the chairman, Mr. Wickman. He's asking my opinion. I kind of agree with Brian. I would. Get that good, hard tile cleaned up and shined up and. And you remember what it was like when you first got here, when they didn't do anything? You're talking to Mr. History Personnel. We didn't do anything until you got on the board in ninety eight. We were cleaned up.
I haven't spent my entire life here, Melvin, so.
No, I still, I just remember the story. It was in pretty bad shape and then we finally. Twenty years ago, got it shined up and cleaned up and it looked really nice and it's, I don't know, I guess it's part of the courthouse and I've. Let's say, leave it because if Susan's right, and this other flooring we have on the main entryway is. Not going to last ten years. We might end up doing something ten years from now to, to. Actually complement the quarry tile that we have. Putting quarry tile down that way, who knows? Yeah. So, I don't know, if it's good durable stuff and just needs cleaned up and waxed up and patched up, I. I'm with you. Save the thirty one thousand? Yeah, see what, you know, it's been there for. Forty years.
You don't get a vote, Melvin.
I don't get a vote. She's asking my opinion. Since I'm the custodian of the courthouse under the direction of the board. That's my thoughts. And, you know, it's. Been there for fifty years. There's no nine one one on. Doing anything.
I know it's probably the last piece. In the remodeling of the courthouse space.
It, it was just a thought that, you know, to try to get everything to match, you know what I mean? Because it just doesn't match very well.
But if you look at my house, nothing matches either, so I'm used to nothing matching.
And it's something we can always entertain later.
I would say let's buff it up. Let's make it, let's sharpen it up. Transition there's fine. We've spent a lot of money in the last couple of years on this thing. I'd like to take a breather on it.
Okay, so we've had the discussion. Any motions? If not, we will move on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. All right, next up, Jenna Limerick, Director, Human Resources, Discussion and or Decision to Approve an Authorized Board to Sign. The Local Two Three Six Four American Federation of State, County and Municipal Employees Courthouse Employees Wage Reopener Agreement. Effective July one, twenty twenty four through June thirty, twenty twenty five.
All right, so this has gone through the negotiation process and has gone to the members for ratification. With this wage re opener, we're taking the current step one, adding a dollar fifty to that. Each step is two point five percent. From the step prior, employees will remain in their current step.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Belt, second by Shay.
Does that require a roll call, Susan? Jenna, does that require a roll call on that?
I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, a roll call then.
Okay, is there additional discussion? Melvin, will you call the roll, please?
Sure, Chairman Miller?
Aye.
Supervisors, Bell?
Aye.
Rickman?
Aye.
Shay?
Aye.
And Jorgensen?
Aye.
I'm ayes.
Great. All right, next we have Local Two Three Six Four American Federation of State, County and Municipal Employees, Nine One One Employees Wage Reopener Agreement. Effective July one, twenty twenty four through June thirty, twenty twenty five.
Similar in that we've gone through the negotiation process. The offer has been ratified with the union. And again, similar to the courthouse union, we're taking a dollar fifty, adding it to step one. Each step is two point five percent apart from the one prior. In regards to the nine one one union members, they will move a step as well. I didn't bring those dollars, I'm sorry. We can probably discuss that during the budget session, and I know we've discussed it many times, but I'm sorry I didn't bring that with me. Yes, I'll be bringing to you. The deputies. They've all, they've ratified. I just need to type it up and bring it to you for approval and then we are still waiting on Teamsters. To ratify. They'll be meeting this Thursday and Friday.
Jenna, on this one for the nine one one. Mm hmm. The wages that are spelled out in here, it differs from what you just told us.
The wages that are on appendix?
No, the summary in section one are article thirteen wages effective July one, twenty twenty four.
So section one, you have employees shall be compensated in accordance with the wage schedule. So that's appendix A.
Right.
Right?
And then the next paragraph.
Right, and then the next one is for those that are not in the stepping grade, that are in that bucket. So they don't. Because they're not in that stepping grade, they're not moving with that dollar fifty, so they're getting five point five percent pay increase.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion by Belt, second by Jorgensen to approve the nine one one employees. Contract re opener agreement. Melvin, will you call the roll, please?
Chairman Miller?
Aye.
Supervisor Shay?
Aye.
Bell?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
And Rickman?
Aye.
Thank you, Jenna. You're welcome. All right, next up, committee appointments. Find my notes here, I said. I just lost all my stuff. Give me a second. Okay, so last Thursday, Tim and I attended a transportation committee meeting, which Matt Wyon convened for us. It resurrected the. What was developed several years ago. And anyway, it gave the chance from the, from the county, we had John Rasmussen, Tim, myself and Matt Wyon. The CB Chamber, Chris LaFerla, he led the discussion or convened the meeting. And then from the city of Council Bluffs, we had Matt Walsh, Matt Cox and Brandon Garrett. Basically, what it came down to is the need for a traffic study. On Highway ninety two going south. Through to the Lewis Central School.
That's. Highway two seventy five.
Oh, two seventy, well, it starts at the Highway ninety two intersection, going south on Highway. Oh, two seventy. Well, it starts at the Highway ninety two intersection, going south on Highway seventy five. Sorry. Anyway, the city was going to have a traffic study just to, we've had some complaints about the intersections down there. As far as trying to get truck traffic out with the expansion of the schools, there's just more traffic down there. And the suggestion was made that maybe the county piggyback on that study with the city. So that we can take it farther, maybe to the county line, just to get through some of those other additional housing developments that are down in that area.
Yeah.
There's no sense having two separate studies. It would make more sense to me to have one study to work from. So anyway, that was that was just a meeting I went to last week. Did you have anything you wanted to add to that, Tim?
Well, that was that was one of the things that was discussed and um. I think. Adding a a couple of turn lanes is gonna help dramatically if John's safety study. Tells us that and um from there. With the addition of the industrial park that the county. Rephrase, the industrial park that's down there right now. And I don't know if everybody is aware, but. Louisville Central Schools bought another piece of ground just to the south of the old Bus Barn area. For an elementary school. They build an elementary school there. Uh we're we're gonna have, we're gonna have more than. We're we're gonna have more traffic than that. Intersections are ever gonna be able to handle, so I'm not sure what the answer is, but we have some really good people on it. And um I think it'll. Await for the um. Study to be done.
Was Lewis Central involved in the discussion with you guys at all?
No, at this point, it was just reconvening what used to be the Transportation Committee.
There was discussion, though Scott, before things moved too much further is to get. On Brent, I think it's Brent closing.
Yeah.
Pacing. To um be part of that discussion and I think that's the plan and maybe even a. School board member from Louis Central, so.
Who was it? That's wrong. I think O'Reilly was in charge of the Transportation Committee, wasn't he? Last?
Yeah. There we, there were some really good discussions that that happened on the Transportation Committee. This even with the uh state.
Oh, Scott.
The state DOT people there. And to get any assistance from the state, um you know, traffic counts need to be. Well, I shouldn't say in that area. Cause we wouldn't get any from the state, that city county road, but. Uh in some other areas where the county looked at, um maybe adding a turn lane or two, like outline west where the traffic wasn't there to do it, so. Um. In order to get any state assistance on any of our. Um concerns locally about access to state highways, the traffic count has to be there in order for us to get it down the state. But it was it was really good conversation. I I really liked it. It was the right thing to do.
Got all the people at the table. Alright, Brian, meeting?
Uh done the assessor meeting here, the public hearing, and Whitea out of Trainery. Whitea's really come a long ways and they're adding members and really promoting things out in the county, so. That's become a very positive thing for the county, towns.
I was just thinking when uh Mark was giving his presentation on. The interest that the counties are having in tourism, I think just having that opportunity. Cause there's a lot of ingenuity out there.
Right.
Creativity, just having that open door for them, whether it's through the tourism or through Whitea, it really. Makes that blossom, I think.
And the new director is working with them. Our new director that we hired last year has really got a lot of energy and really bringing a lot to the table, so. It's uh very positive. There's a newsletter she puts out every month and that. Once you get on it, it's really decent, so. Anxious to see this continue its direction.
I was at the uh meeting uh for the Southwest Iowa Juvenile Detention Center. Things are going good. They've uh they've got their budget under control, which is always a always a challenge. And these times, uh but they're doing good. Uh and also I was at the uh Airport Authority uh meeting. I'm very impressed with what's going on on the top of the Council Plus Air. They're growing. Uh they they're even having trouble keeping paint stripes on their on their airport runways. Because of being so so uh you know, a lot of traffic, a lot of a lot of traffic going on. Airport lanes. Like very impressed with them. They're growing. They wanna grow. They certainly are one of the best local airports in the air, so.
I had uh East and West Nishnebatna Watershed Management Authority meetings. Um they're getting uh. Speaking grants put together to get some more funding for the East and West Nishnebatna, so. Seem like there's some monies out there from the state and from the government is what uh was called by the committee, so. They meet usually about the same time as their East West, so so water conservation. And that person hasn't been there for. Long time. I don't know who has on there anymore. Used to have Bob on there and then Russ and Bobby. Maybe it's the heat now.
Chris has been ill.
Oh, I think it's it's tough. It's tough to have meetings on top of meetings, so. They 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 meet quarterly out there in Oakland.
Have anything else you want to add to? Well, I know that the phone calls have been coming in on the tax notice that went out. To all of the property owners in Potomac County. We created a log and as of this morning, we've had thirteen different people who have called in. And if you've got other phone calls, send the information to Jeanette so that she can add it to the tracking spreadsheet. Because we'd like to demonstrate exactly how much additional time this statement took. Um taxpayer time and money to answer these questions or try to answer the questions on something that doesn't make much sense. Um I talked, I sent a text to Matt Walsh this morning. The city of Council Bluffs had their public hearing last night on their tax notice. And they typically have one or two people that show up for these meetings. They had forty to fifty people that they're meeting last night. Um he said it was a good meeting, um just a lot of information that was discussed, but. I think we can anticipate. Probably having at least that many people attend our public hearings, so we may need to take the tables out of this room again so that we can accommodate more chairs. Um on another note, the Pigeon Creek Public Hearing on their drainage district is getting a lot of. Creating a lot of phone calls as well. And I think there's a little confusion going on with it and I don't know. Who's spearheading the questions? Is it Linda Swoley? Is it, should the questions go back to Bolton and Mank?
The question should probably go to Bolton, Mank or the trustees. Is Linda really wasn't in on the uh this early discussions on why they were doing this.
Right.
So we're just gonna be there uh taking minutes best we can.
Here's what I know. The farmers that were directly affected have been paying for it for years. And with the floods, everybody became more. Aware of what was happening. And with maps coming out through the FEMA deal. The whole district goes to the top of all the drainage that comes that way. And.
It's up the hill.
It's all the way to the top of the hill. That's really what it is. And um they're all in the drainage district.
Water goes downhill. That's all only a deep. Water comes up.
And a lot of people said, well, my water don't go that way. Well, it does. And it's nothing to do with the county. It has to do with the drainage district. And they've decided, not decided, but they need help with finishing their work. And they're in really tough shape. They need some monies. And we all drain that way and I'm gonna be in it too, so.
So the water that comes off of your house runs to Pigeon Creek and that's why you're involved.
Yep.
Even though you don't get any benefit, but you are contributing.
We do because when we get heavy rains. We all know what the flood's done. Cut off six eighty and the old Lincoln Highway and. What a mess that was.
Well, you would get it. Alright, you get a benefit.
So we get some heavy rains, it allows that water to drain correctly. I get it. I'll say that, but we're not involved. The county is not involved. That's a drainage district. And they get, they have their own taxing authority. And they can do what they need to do. So there is a public hearing coming up on the fourth over at the EMA Building. And if anybody's got questions, I suggest they be there. And I think that's it. Was it ten or ten fifteen?
Ten a.m.
Ten a.m.
Two, one on the annexation, one on the reclassification. These two things are important.
Okay.
But anyway, there's more confusion out there. And I spent yesterday at the courthouse and noticed that there was a lot of foot traffic coming in to pay property taxes. And there was also a trial that they were seating a jury for. The parking lot was. Filled. Um my husband came in this morning and he said the parking lot was full. And I noticed from my window that there's an employee vehicle, so I reminded Jason to. Enforce the employee parking, not in that parking lot. Well, it was yesterday. It was yesterday. And I just wanted, any employees that are listening, we have other parking spots. Leave the public parking for the public.
So. Do you think? Why why would there have been a rush on taxes yesterday?
Well, property taxes are due the end of this month.
Right, it was a nice day to get out, I suppose.
The line was very, very long yesterday.
Really?
Yeah, it was very long. It was a busy, busy day. Last week, the end of last week was very busy too.
Oh.
Yeah, I don't know. There, yeah, there must other things, the other things going upstairs.
I get behind my buyer and I've never really seen today. It's the first time I saw the parking lot. It really looked like it was kinda. Jamming. Figure out he was all parking out there. Knew that was gonna happen, I guess. We've not, we're not uh doing the ticket thing yet, are we?
Not yet.
Okay.
Alright. No, alright, and budget studies, that's it. Voting to adjourn?
So moved.